A call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Victorville Water District. We have, on roll call, we have two excused absences, which is Councilman Terry Caldwell and Councilwoman Joanne Allman. And I'll call for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on any item, please come to the podium. Hearing none. We'll now entertain a motion going to closed session. Andre.
Mayor Cabralis, we have two closed session items. The first is closed session pursuant to government code 5495-6.9b3b. It's pending threat litigation. The existing facts and circumstances are that the city entered into a contract with General Electric. We have not been able to abide by the terms of that contract and today, high likelihood of litigation, and I need to brief you in direction with respect thereto. The second is an addendum, which is existing litigation, government code 5495-6.9a. It is the City of Victorville versus Shawn Storm et al., case number CIVVS 804130, and I need to get direction with respect thereto. If there's anything reportable, we will come out and report either at the end of closed session or prior to the commencement of the regular seven o'clock meeting.
I'll reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency and Victorville Water District. We do have reportable actions?
Mayor Cabralis, we do have reportable action as a result of this afternoon's, or five o'clock closed session. We had a closed session item pursuant to government code 5495-6.9a, existing litigation, City of Victorville versus Shawn Storm et al., case number CIVVS 804130. It is a condemnation action, and the council voted unanimously, three votes to none, two people being absent, to settle the condemnation action for a price of $315,000 to include the purchase of the property along with all attorney's fees, and it affects parcel number
Now we'll have the invocation, and that'll be by Pastor Hector Gonzalez from God's Garden Church. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by our Victorville Police Chief, Reynolds.
May I ask that we all bow our heads, please? Father in heaven, we come before you in the name of your precious holy son. And your word tells us that you have highly exalted him. You have given him a name that is above every name. For in the name of Jesus, every knee will bow in heaven and in earth and things under the earth, and every tongue will confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God the Father. Father, I just pray right now for the mayor of this great city and for the members of this city council. Pray that you would bless them and bless their families. And we also pray that you would bless this evening here. Pray that everything would be done with decency and in order, and we give you the praise, Jesus' name. Amen.
Yvonne, I have a question. Yvonne, are we going to do the banners today?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Now going to our public comments part of the meeting, and anyone that wants to speak on items that are not on the agenda may do so at this time. And I do have a couple of cards. You're limited to three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I would just like to say that the councilwoman Allman has requested that I let you know that she's been under the weather lately. She hasn't been able to make it tonight, but she will try to make the next meeting. Also, I noticed in the paper that Walmart is going to be going into Hesperia, and I'd just like to know if we can find out if Walmart's going to get into Victorville or not, because I think we, Victorville, requested them come in here before Hesperia did, but over and above the legal things, it'd just be nice to know if we could get going with them, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, I talked to Supervisor Metzenfeld's office, and this is regarding the library. The street that says, there's a sign that says this is not a city-maintained street. The Board of Supervisors or Council Metzenfeld said that it's not a county-owned street. And I'd like to know who was responsible for it, because the potholes are just awful over there. And we need to do something. I mean, it's very, very bad. Huge holes. And also, I'd like to know since La Mesa is shut down, can we move that light temporarily to King Canyon Road, because there is now a backup of cars trying to make left turns onto Amagosa? It's causing quite a bit of problems.
What I can do is I'll have our city engineer talk to you after the meeting, or get your cards, we can call you back.
Okay, that'd be fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Hearing none, we'll start with our Library Board of Trustees' agenda. And do we have any revisions to?
No revisions.
No revisions to this one, okay. We have a consent calendar?
For approval?
Next, we have the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority and also the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Councilman, or Mayor Protem Mike Rushile is the vice chair. He'll...
We have no revisions to the rail authority, but we have the consent calendar.
Move for approval?
And on the airport authority, we have no revisions as well, but we do have a consent calendar there.
For approval?
We have agenda item number four is authorize $35,000 to the school out there for their educational consortium. Move for approval on that item.
Second.
That's it on, that's the end of the airport authority. Turn it back over to you.
Redevelopment Authority, we have no revisions to the agenda. We have a consent calendar.
Excuse me, Chairman Cabralis, there is one revision to the RDA agenda. Item number six, the staff has requested that the item be continued to March 16th.
Move for approval?
Second.
Item number four, the request to approve Class One Director for the Victorville Public Development Corporation.
Mayor, isn't it tradition that you appoint those that aren't here? I think that's what happened to me at the last meeting, so...
That's right, but I think...
I think this board's going to go away.
Yes, it's going to go away real quick.
So, it's no punishment there.
We do have a request and a recommendation from our director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is really intended to serve as an attempt to conduct a housekeeping involving the Victorville Public Development Corporation. The VPDC was formed originally as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization mainly to own and operate the former Northgate Village Apartments. The RDA, I'm sorry, the VPDC actually sold that property a few years back now and has been out of the business of owning and operating multifamily apartment communities. Over the time, we had envisioned it potentially being opportunistic to have the nonprofit available if we wanted to further our affordable housing goals in a different fashion than in using the RDA as the organization to direct the activities. Since that time, we really have not found a purpose, and even today don't see or envision a purpose going forward in maintaining and preserving the VPDC. So what we have to do is appoint Class One Directors. And the board makeup of the VPDC comprises seven members, and they define them by Class One and Class Two. The Class One members are generally representative of the redevelopment agency and traditionally have been two council members and the executive director or the city manager. The Class Two members have generally been members of the community appointed at large by the actual VPDC board. What we're attempting to do is convene a VPDC board meeting so that we can actually conduct the dissolution of that organization. Because we haven't had a board meeting in some time and because terms have actually expired for a number of those board members, we want to reappoint, reassert the board so that we can conduct one last meeting. So with that, staff is requesting the appointment of two Class One Directors.
I'm already a director, right?
Correct.
So, we need to...
To be the mayor and...
Yeah, the vacancies were created by former councilmember Bob Hunter and then city manager John Roberts.
You're recommending that the mayor and the city manager be appointed?
I'd recommend that.
So, I'll move that to recommendation.
A motion? Item number five, request to accept the notice of completion for the NSP rehabilitated properties listed in the staff report.
Move for approval?
Item number six is continue to March 16th. Victorville Water District, there are no revisions to the agenda. We have a consent calendar.
Move for approval?
Item number four, it's a request to approve change orders to the Forecon Engineering Contract for the SCLA Industrial Wastewater Treatment Plant in the amount of $116,907.95.
For approval?
Item number five, request to approve increase in purchase order number 4372 for BCS for wellsite chemical supplies, and that's in the amount of $47,000.
Approval?
Request to award contract number CC 10-025A to North Central Labs, and that's in the amount of $24,164.15.
Move for approval?
Item number seven, request to award contract number CC 10-025B to Hatch Company in the amount of $4,239.79 for laboratory supplies. Item number eight is to request to approve contract with the same company listed above in the amount of $36,734.49, and that again is for laboratory supplies.
Move for approval?
City Council Agenda, item number two, revision to the agenda, and we do have one revision?
Yes, we do, on public hearing item number four. This requires a four-fifths vote of the city council. Therefore, since we only have three members of the city council available tonight, this item should be opened for public comment and then continued to the next regular meeting.
Thank you. Item number three, say continued public hearing to hear arguments for or against introduction of ordinance number 2257. Is there any presentations on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'll keep it brief in case there's any questions on the specific ordinance. There are some technical aspects to it. But in short, several months ago, the BIA and other developers, other members of the development community came before the council and requested relief in specific areas, different areas. We asked that they focus, and one of their prime concerns was the holding of bonds over extensive periods while tracks lay dormant. And staff looked into it, and the streamlining, the MAP Act provides for it, so state law does provide for the substitution of bonds, of liens in place of bonds, though our municipal code did not specify that you could substitute or use liens as securities. The city engineer has reviewed this, and there are a few concerns noted in this staff report, which I'll just hit on, but I believe that the ordinance before you does anticipate pretty much most circumstances surrounding development and dormant tracks. First of all, these tracks, the ordinance applies to tracks that are in all states from grading on through semi-developed, which I believe, Mr. Mayor, was one of your concerns, and I had said we'd be coming forward in a few months with some more language responding to that. And what this does on the city's behalf is it enables the city to require more consistent development and cohesive development for partially developed tracks. It also has specific language which secures master planned improvements, which I'll just say in general, response to, or relates to the improvements that are necessary for the part of the track that's already developed, so that the city can still go forward and construct those, and that the lien at least will be equal to that value. The issue that I wanted, well, two issues. One, again, this is only, this only applies to maps that are, or tracks that are dormant. Basically, when a track goes dormant, the developer can come to the city engineer and request an application to substitute liens. During that, there's an analysis, it comes before the council. So every one of these agreements would be, would come before the city council, the city engineer, with the city engineer's analysis. However, if agreed upon, once the tract is activated again and permits are pooled, prior to a permit being pooled, those liens must be changed out for bonds or cash or some other substantial security. So the liens will only be carried when a tract is dormant. That's number one. The second issue is kind of a large issue that we want the council to be aware, the city engineer specifically, as well as myself, staff wants the council to be aware of. There may be times, and likely right now during this economic climate, that the value of the land is no longer equal to the bonds on that land. There are tracks out there where the bonds are higher than the value of the land, and I want to make that clear. This ordinance will apply to those also, but what we're requiring is this, we're requiring that the lien is at least equal, as I stated earlier, to the master planned improvements. So although the value, the bonds may be higher than the land, they are placed there for, or they are in place in order to provide for all infrastructure. Well, if you have 200 lots and none are developed and they're all graded, there is no infrastructure necessary internal to that property, if you've, likely. If you have partially developed, there may be an exterior road, there may be drainage, there may be some infrastructure necessary, and that is what the liens have to cover. So that language is written in here. Again, that'll be scrutinized by the city engineer, and the developers will have their day in court before this council on every agreement, if there's any concern, one way or the other, on staff's part or the developers, on whether it's equitable and whether the required improvements are actually required of the existing development. In short, that's basically it. We wrap this up in a few months. We've been working, the city staff has been working closely with the BIA and individuals in the development community. We found it a reasonable request at this time, considering what's going on out there. This is not something that's going to be obviously typical when we're in a race like we were a couple of years ago, and everybody's moving as fast as they can, and they're, you know, they're building before the, you know, before we even have, before the bonds have even dried off. That's not going to be the case. But during these downtimes, it seems, I don't know, unreasonable, but it seems, I'll put it the other way, it seems reasonable for the city to understand the concerns of the developers, holding bonds and the expense of holding bonds versus liens for these properties that will be developed in time but are not at this point developed.
Any questions, Council?
Do we have any need to track the change of ownership throughout a period of time, or is that incidental and it doesn't matter? Whenever somebody comes in and says we want to start building, whether it's the original property owner with a deal or a future one, it doesn't matter to us?
Yes, for a variety of reasons. I'm sure Shawn would agree. There's a lot of reasons that we're going to need to keep track to a certain extent of the owners. There are things that we don't have control of, but like bonds, it's similar to the bond situation. Even though this ordinance and the agreement prohibits the sale of the property, there are things built into it, but as Shawn has stated, it can and has occurred to us where those things have, you know, have happened, or, you know, in the past and probably can again. The reality of it is, we don't really cash in bonds that often, and so therefore the lien change isn't going to affect us much, or shouldn't affect us at all. But we did want you to be aware that we may be, you know, not only will we be accepting liens for more than the value of property, we already have bonds more than the property value of the property. But we do try to track the ownership as much as possible, and we did try to tie into the ordinance issues such as that. Now that's for somebody who complies with the written agreement.
Thank you. I will now reopen the public hearing on item number three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three can come up to the podium. I do have a card from Jim Tatum.
Hi, this is Jim Tatum, a longtime member of the community. And I just want to thank the staff and especially Jim Cox and for initiating this. It's been a struggle for, I think, all developers to keep their bonds in place and pay for them when there's, you know, the values have dropped considerably. Today, you could buy recorded lots that are graded for around $5,000 or $6,000 apiece. You could buy finished lots, buy that meaning, ready to build on, except for the final let of asphalt and sidewalks for somewhere between $12,000 and $15,000 apiece. So the values of our property has diminished some fierce. So we appreciate that we're able to get this burden off of our back, and we think, we'd like to thank Bill Webb and the city engineer for the job they've done, and just say thanks, guys, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else for or against item number three? Hearing none, I'll close item number three. I would ask for the introduction of ordinance number 2257.
I'll read the title, Mayor Cabralis. Ordinance number 2257, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving case number DEV 10-00001, amending section 17.64.060 of chapter 17.64 of the Victorville Municipal Code to allow for lien agreements to be used as substitute securities for subdivision agreement tract improvements and establishing lien agreement fee, City of Victorville.
Move introduction of ordinance number 2257?
Motion include waiver for the reading?
Wave.
Thank you.
Item number four will be continued, but I will open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four, please come up to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, and this will be continued until we have a quorum.
Technically closing the public hearing, just continuing it.
Item number five, it's a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intend to adopt a notice of exemption for the Reclaim Waterline Extension to Deluge Tank Project. I will now open up the public hearing on item number five. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number five, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close public hearing on item number five.
For approval of the notice of exemption?
Item number six, the public hearing, call to hear arguments for or against approving the notice of intend to adopt a notice of exemption for the Aerospace Drive Reclaim Waterline water line extension project. I will now open up the public hearing on item number six. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number six, please come to the podium. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on item number six.
If approval, notice of exemption?
Item number seven is a consent calendar.
If approval?
Item number eight is a request to approve memorandum of understanding between the city of Victorville, the city of Asperia, Excelsior Public Charter School, Associated Student Body of Victor Valley College, and the Victor Valley College District. And it's subject to minor non-sensational changes by the attorney, and this is for the traffic signal at Fish Hatchery Road and Bear Valley Road.
For approval?
Item number nine, request to award a contract to C. Morales Incorporated in the amount of $255,000 for the construction of a traffic signal at Fish Hatchery and Bear Valley Road, subject to execution of the MOU.
Comment, this is our staff and others are working together in a very tight economy to help get a project like this in place, and complement everybody associated with it, the colleges and the city and everything, so, and staff as well, especially Yvonne Hester's work in this.
Mayor Cabralis, may I get a vote from you on this item? Vote.
What'd I do?
Mayor Cabralis, I need, I need your vote. Thank you.
I was listening to.
Item number 10, is a request to increase the not to exceed amount by $58,000 for the service provided agreement for Tate and Associates for the storm drain crossing of US 395 north of Palmdale, line E-01.
For approval?
Item number 11 is a request to approve resolution number 10-014, and so the resolution of the city of Victorville certifying that the city of Victorville has the resources to fund the project submitted for inclusion in the FY 210 to 11 and 215, 216 transportation improvement program. Item number 12, request to authorize the city manager to negotiate and approve the best possible offer for sale of the attached list of equipment. Mr. Cox?
We have spent quite a bit of time, from the staff's point of view, contacting, discussing, negotiating, and trying to make a determination to salvage as much of this equipment as we possibly can. We decided recently that before we dismantle and sell off pieces of the equipment, that we would make an attempt to make a request for proposals, to see if anyone, anywhere was interested in utilizing what currently exists to finish the plant or make an interest we were interested in negotiating, that we use as much equipment as possible to carry this out, excuse me. Realizing that once we start the dismantling process, that option probably will not be available, and also realizing that anyone that would be interested in buying the surplus equipment is going to take the best pieces first, we're going to be left probably with equipment that we cannot sell or dispose of. But nevertheless, longer that it sits, the more it deteriorates, and the less probability we have of salvaging it and receiving any money. We made that attempt, we also personally contacted a lot of organizations that were involved in this kind of activity. We received no offers, and at this time, we're requesting the council to authorize the manager to receive and negotiate the best possible offers that we can get for the equipment. There's a list that is attached to the equipment that speaks for itself. We do have interested parties. Almar Jekker is not here tonight, he is ill, but he has personally contacted individuals, and we have, we know we're going to get some immediate proposals. We want to move on this as soon as we possibly can.
The only thing that, not so much a question, but a comment, it's come to my attention, although I did not see it myself, someone indicated that on news today, Secretary of State Hillary Clinton was in Chile, and apparently they're looking for generators of some sort. I don't know if there's options for us there, but apparently there's a need, and if we could at least explore that. The federal government's going to be buying them anyway, and we have them, we ought to at least look at that.
We, that's a good point, I was aware of that, I'd kind of forgotten about it, thank you for reminding me. We will contact our congressman first thing tomorrow to be the intermediary, intermediary, to see if there is an interest in this, and we'll forward that list to them.
Other than that, I would make the motion to approve this.
Item 13, discussion and possible action regarding the California Desert Protection Act of 2010. I know that Mr. Caldwell, or Councilman Caldwell, had, has some questions. He's not here tonight. I don't know what the wishes of the council, do we want a full council?
I would, I don't think it's urgent that we take action on this tonight. I'd put it off until we have a full council.
I do have several cards, again, and some of the, maybe some of the same people that spoke last time. You have the option, you can speak again, or you can wait until we have a full council. Yes, is your spokesperson for the group?
Thank you, council members. We actually have quite a few people here tonight. I don't know how many of them are able to come back, if it'll be a third time, so if, you know, possible, I would like them to speak. But I do, you know, if any of you have any questions, I'm happy to answer that. We did forward information to Councilman Caldwell regarding his questions from two weeks ago regarding the military. We do not have a letter from them yet, but I gave him contact names of people that he can call to contact them. We can't get letters from the local level, they're not allowed to, so we have to wait from DC, it takes a while. As soon as we get that letter, we're happy to forward that to you. As far as he had questions about solar, if there'd be enough areas in the desert for solar, given the monument and the wilderness areas, you know, the California Energy Commission has come out and said that we only need 165,000 to 128,000 acres of land for solar, and that's only if we rely on solar, and it's only if we rely on the Mojave Desert, and that will meet our RPS goals. So I think, you know, and BLM has now, the Secretary of the Interior has now designated the solar study areas, which is about 325,000 acres, so there's plenty of land. None of those conflict with any of our boundaries for the monument or the wilderness proposals. He also asked about mining. Two areas, both totaling over 40,000 acres each, have been dropped from the proposal in order deference to the mining industry, and 35,000 acres of a wilderness study area are being released, which will also now be opened up to mining. So I think we've addressed his concerns, you know, we'd like a vote from the city council, we'd really like your support, but I know there are people here tonight who may not be able to come back, so if their comments can be put on record, I think that would be helpful.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll call your name if you can come back when we have this item back on the agenda again, because some of these spoke already, so if we're going to say the same thing, it's already on the record. But we have Jim Conkle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff. I'm not an outsider, as you know, I'm very active in this community, and I urge you to really consider supporting this bill. Victorville takes the leading role in the high desert, always has and always will, and so it's very important that, I never thought I would stand here in front of you and say, "I'm supporting a bill that's being put on by a liberal from Northern California as a diehard conservative," but I have to tell you that this is the best bill for all of us. It's a win for everybody, and I can see the economic impact that we're going to enjoy, and the protection in the desert, and I strongly urge you to really consider supporting this bill for us, because it's better than anything we've got out there right now. So I thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members. My name is Timmy Levy, and I've lived in the-
Speak into the mic, please.
Sorry. My name is Timmy Levy, and I've lived in the high desert for over 25 years. I've, you know, gone to elementary school, junior high school, high school, attended junior college here, worked in the community, and I'm also in the military. I currently serve in the Air Force Reserves, and I traveled all over the world. One of the things that keeps me here in the high desert is, you know, the beautiful surroundings, obviously, and a lot of the history here, the Mojave Desert, obviously, and Route 66 being, you know, a big historical monument or historical area. And, you know, I would really respectfully request your support in passing this California Protection Act of 2010. I think that it's invaluable, and I think that it would bring a lot of economy to this area. I know that it was devastated after, you know, the loss of the base, and I think that we're, you know, growing now, and I think that this would help. So I thank you, and good night.
Thank you. Marisa Calderon?
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Jerry Grebo, I'm the president of AMA District 37. For those of you that don't know, AMA District 37 off-road races in the high desert. They race motorcycles and quads. We have about 40 events a year, and over half of them occur in Johnson Valley, and the other quarter of them are in the high desert in the surrounding area. So we, as an organization of 4,000 members, have quite an economic impact. We're lending support to the bill, simply because it does protect the areas that we recreate in. I feel that the bill is very balanced, as far as the conservation, the energy, and the recreation, because, I mean, I'm sure the city council is aware of the illegal riding that occurs in the high desert, and, you know, I mean, if the riding areas are gone, then, you know, in this bill, we'll protect the areas that we currently use right now, and there's five open areas that will be protected. And so that's why District 37 will be lending its support. So, thank you.
You.
Mayor, excuse me, mayor and council members, I spoke to you guys a couple weeks ago, and I just wanted to update you all and let you know that since last we spoke, there have been a couple updates in terms of additional support for the bill, and so I'm going to just want to highlight a couple of the new support that's come forward, and again, urge the council to support the California Desert Protection Act of 2010. So Abangoa, the local company here, is supporting Edison, Cogentrix, the cities of La Quinta, Ucaipa, Banning, Indian Wells, Cathedral City, Desert Hot Springs, Apple Valley, the Morongo Valley Community Services District, and Chamber of Commerce, the Joshua Tree Municipal Advisory Committee, council rather, Joshua Tree Chamber, the 29 Palms Chamber, as well as countless other organizations that really represent a lot of individuals here in the high desert. So, thank you very much, and I urge you to support the bill.
Thank you, Laura. And Keith? Brett?
Mayor, council, I'm Brent Gaddis, Vice President of the Mojave River Valley Museum, and we support this bill. We find the deep creek is our headwaters of the Mojave River, which we all rely on for business and our livelihood, so please put it on consideration, and thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Just as an observation, we're not going to take, no, 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 I was going to wait until you're all done, just make a comment before you left, and put a food for thought into Senator Feinstein's office. We've got this state rule now that as we develop, I'll give you an example, the solar field for our power plant number two out there, about 300 acres, and we had to buy 900 acres of hinterland, someplace to preserve for that type of species. We developed this national park system now here, which is an extensive footprint on there, that maybe we, the relief can come from our local governments, at least, and the business community, that we stop this three-for-one taking of land for land. I mean, it's a zero-sum game at the end of the deal, you're going to wind up in spots, and we can't afford to do that. We had to buy 900 acres out there in the hinterlands to replace 300 acres next to Victorville to build our project, the next person that comes along, the same deal. That type of taking is self-defeating, and needs to be considered. I know that the federal legislation is still in evolution a bit, and I know that you're bumping into state issues, but I would think that federal would supersede state. I don't know, I'm a bit, that's above my pay grade, but I'm saying that we're bumping into those issues now, and this community's continuing to grow, and as we go up the freeway and everything else, we need that to stop. And this is, I like your program so far, I haven't decided, in all honesty, how way I'm going to vote yet, but that would go a long ways towards speaking to me as one
Mayor and council members, my name's Marissa Calderon, thanks so much, and with respect to your comments, I wholeheartedly agree that that's a concern, certainly from a private perspective, and one of the things that's actually contained within this legislation addresses that specifically. It provides for a mitigation bank, because in some cases, there is a three-to-one or a five-to-one even mitigation that's required, that really gobbles up a lot of private land, and then, you know, pretty soon, there isn't any private land left to mitigate for, for species. So this federal mitigation bank, what it would do is it allows for existing federal public land to be identified by the Department of the Interior to serve as a mitigation bank, so that companies don't have to find that private land and remove it from your tax rules, or remove it from the ability to be developed. And at some point, if there isn't appropriate land to mitigate for species, then developers could put- could put funds into this mitigation bank so that there can be other means of mitigation, not just acquisition of land and trade for land having been impacted. So I think that there is, that's certainly something different. It's, it's been to address concerns exactly such as that, and that it does exist within the legislation as it is today. Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, the only thing that I, I'm going to reiterate that's come up at sandbag meetings with respect to Route 66 is the bridges. There's no appropriations in this bill to deal with the bridge problem on Route 66. As much as I think it would do great things for all the cities and towns and, and unincorporated areas along Route 66, and it is truly a, a national monument to all of us here in California, I'm really concerned that there's no federal monies that are going to deal with these bridge problems. And unless that can be addressed here soon, I've got serious concerns about that, this bill going forward, you know, designating Route 66 in such a way that it's going to cause more tourism and we have unsafe bridges as it is. So I, I'm hopeful, because it's come up several times, Supervisor Mitzelfelt has made quite an issue of this, and I don't know that there's been any resolution to it. So I'm, yeah, please.
One of the reasons there is no money in this bill is because the senator did not want any money in this economy tied to this bill. So there is no appropriations tied to it, and she's pretty firm on that. However, we have heard from Supervisor Mitzelfelt, Mitzelfelt and the rest of the San Bernardino County Supervisors, that is a big concern. And from our last meeting, the James Peterson, the Deputy State Director, took that, that request very seriously and not so much even for maybe appropriations, but at least putting language in the bill that would allow them to use timber versus the concrete that they would have to use, so, and, and that's been done before. So they are researching that. But I would urge you to make that request, put that in writing to the senator's office so that they know that, that it's not just the San Bernardino County Supervisors asking for that, but it's important to the City of Victorville also. And I would urge you, you know, to, to work with the senator's office and putting in those requests rather than not supporting the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep the cards and we'll send them notices so, of the next meeting when we have full council. Thank you very much. And I'm, I'm sorry we have to, you know, continue it again, but we need to have a full council here, at least. Councilman Caldwell who raised the issues from last time, so.
March 16th.
Yeah. March 16th. Item 14 is presentation of reports from council members. I have none. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight and have a good night.